I call the regular meeting of the Eugene School Board to order on Wednesday, September 7th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. All board members are attending virtually tonight. Here with me are Gordon Laver, Kirti Hasijah Kaufman, Alicia Hayes, Michelle Shu, Judy Newman, Laurel O'Rourke, and myself, Maya Rabasa. Please join in the flag salute to be led by Superintendent Andy Dai. You're muted, Andy.
My apologies. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now I will read the land acknowledgement. The Eugene School Board would like to acknowledge that our institution sits on the homelands of the Kalapuyia people. In the treaties of 1851 and 1854 to 1855, and the subsequent forced removals of many Indian people from Western Oregon, some of the Kalapuyia were moved to the Grand Ronde Reservation and some were moved to the Sylets Reservation. It is important to note that all of Lane County was an important trading and gathering area for camus and other resources. During the Restoration Era from 1977 to 1989, Lane County was designated as the service area for the Confederated Tribes of Coos, Lower Amquah, and Sayusla Indians, the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ronde Indians, the Confederated Tribes of Sylets Indians, the Coquell Indian Tribe, and the Cow Creek and Amquah Indians. Eugene School District acknowledges that the descendants of original and service area inhabitants of this land are still here today. They are thriving members of our schools and our communities. Countless members of other tribes now also call our community and schools their home. We wish to thank those original stewards of this land. We, as fellow stewards of this land, wish to remember that we need to take good care of this land and take good care of all the members of our school district community. To begin, tonight, the first agenda item is an agenda review. Are there any questions, changes, or corrections to the agenda anyone would like to request? Alicia, I see your hand is raised.
Get my eyes off mute. So I would like to discuss the, hold on, hold on, let me get the dates right. So I'd like to have a discussion about our next retreat. I believe it is on October 1st. I would like us to discuss about changing the topics and just finishing what we started. I don't know if you, what I, let me see if I can do this right. I would like to move that we add to the agenda discussion about our next retreat and what we're going to discuss at the retreat. I think, without going into what it is.
Are you moving to add that as an agenda, as an item for action? Yes?
Yes, ma'am, I am. Thank you for being clear with me.
No worries. I see Laurel is seconding that. So moved by Alicia Hayes and Laurel, and seconded by Laurel O'Rourke. All in favor, say aye and raise your hand and keep it raised. Okay, I see Alicia, myself, Laurel O'Rourke, Judy Newman, Michelle Shu, Gordon Laver, and Kirti Hasijah Kaufman have unanimously voted to add to the agenda a discussion about shifting the topic of our October 1st retreat session. Is there anybody else who has something they would like to add or change or question about the agenda? Okay, well, I have one thing that I would like to propose, and I would like to propose it without objection, to eliminate the agenda item of comments made by the chair and incorporate the comments of the chair into the general comments of all board members. So I would like to do that without objection. Okay. Well, so be it eliminated. We will no longer have that agenda item, and I will include my comments for this year in the general chair, I mean, general board member comments.
Wait, is this, this is changed forever, just like right now?
It is changed for the rest of this year.
How interesting.
Do you have an objection? This is the time to speak up and object to that?
Um, I just, I, the only objection I had was there were, the clarity of how that happened. I didn't understand what you were asking, and I would have. It doesn't concern me for this topic, but there are many topics that would concern me if that happened. And I was like, what did I just miss? That changed so much? That's what, that's my only objection.
The only thing that is shifting is the point in which I make my comments in the agenda, so they are not standing apart from everybody else's.
I was talking about the way it happened. Thank you.
Okay. I'm happy to explain if there's any confusion. Okay. Well, then we will move on. The next item on the agenda is an introduction of guests and our superintendent's report. Superintendent Dai, you have the floor.
Evening Chair Rabasa, members of the board, members of the community listening. I'd like to begin by once again thanking everybody who took the time to come to last week's Back to School Gathering and to those that made that possible. Really appreciate the gracious hosts at Churchill High School, to the impressive Nutrition Services Team. Many hands came together to make the reunion possible. Not the least of which were the folks that spoke. Seth Fafflin and Sheila Wagner and Jennifer Skirlock bring it all home in a really resounding articulation of why we teach and our purpose in the community. With moving, with the moving words of Jennifer and our thoughts, I'm pleased to share that we've already opened their doors to welcome students back. Today was a very exciting day. Palpable, and I'm sure that there were sleepless nights for both students and staff in anticipation of a new year and new beginnings. While, while my own rising 10th grader was less than enthusiastic when asked if they were excited about the start of school, I can report that they were a full 35 minutes early before the first class, so they, they gave themselves away. Student athletes are back on fields and courts, getting ready for competitions. Volunteers are being welcomed back. We're working through new volunteers to make sure that they can get in the buildings. And I want to remind all of our schools that, or all of our community, that once again, schools are a gathering place. I really do encourage family and community supporters to be on the lookout for opportunities to cheer on local teams or attend a play or acquire concert. We're really excited to be able to be the heart of the community that we were prior to the pandemic. Look forward later this evening, excuse me, to sharing the smiling faces of some of our students that were collected across our district later this evening in a report about the first days back to school. But I also need to take a few moments to acknowledge the fact that we are suffering from a loss within our school's community today. We've had team members out in schools to support students and staff and adults by the loss of someone very special to many, many of us. It's a reminder that none of us work in isolation. We absolutely need one another. We need to be seen. We need to feel valued. My heart goes out to everyone, bittersweet in many ways. So I look forward to the remainder of the meeting and thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Superintendent Dai. Next on our agenda is items raised by the audience. The school board receives written comments by email at 4j@board.lane.edu and sets aside time each regular board meeting to hear from public comment, hear public comment. Community members can sign up to speak to the board by submitting their request online at 4j.lane.edu backslash board backslash public comment or contact the superintendent's office. The deadline is the Monday before each meeting, and all of that information can be found on our website. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes and cannot give their time to another speaker. A timekeeper, or we will be using a more traditional, we don't have the digital time tonight. So a traditional timekeeper will show a sign when the speaker has 30 seconds left and when their time is up. Speakers may offer objective comments or criticism about district operations and programs. For complaints about individuals, the district has a board policy and complaint process. Please contact the superintendent's office at 541-790-7707 for more information about submitting a formal complaint. Tonight, we have two speakers who have signed up to speak. And I see that we, I will pass it off to Lisa to introduce the speakers.
Thank you, Maya. We have two speakers tonight. First, we have Mary Beth Hep Elym, who is in with us, and followed by Mary Beth will be Dani Crowley. So Mary Beth, if you want to go ahead and turn on your microphone, you'll have three minutes, and as the board chair said, we're going old school, so I'll give you a 30-second heads up as we get close to, and then the time. Okay, go ahead.
Great, thank you. Good evening, board members, Chair Rabasa, and Superintendent Dai. My name is Mary Beth Hep Elym, and I'm a classified employee of 4J. I want to thank you first for the work you do on behalf of this community, community's children. I know it's not easy to be on a board. Tonight, though, I want to talk to you and I want to make sure that I impress upon you that these ideas and opinions are mine and mine alone. I've been in my position as a program coordinator in the high school for 14 years. I love my job. Prior to working in education, I was a reporter, co-owner of a weekly newspaper, and a public information officer at a community college. And that's when I was bitten by the education bug. Many of my coworkers also come from varied experiences and levels of education. They are smart. They care about the children they are around, and they build relationships with those children. It's very gratifying to me to have a former student return several years after graduation and tell me that if it wasn't for me pointing them toward an internship opportunity, they never would have pursued their dreams. But I'm afraid for the relationship between the classified employees and the school district. Why? This district's recent proposal of a starting wage for classified of $16 per hour is just not going to work. I send students to job and internship interviews where they will be made offers of $17 an hour and more for little to no work experience. As the inflation rate continues to rise, now up to 8.5% for the year, according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, classified cannot continue to support their families. Since January 2022, my family has had to adjust our budget more than once to cover our expenses, and we're looking to adjust again this fall as prices continue to increase. This means an entire sector of Lane County workers will put less money in savings and retirement annuities. It means fewer dollars going into our local and national economies. And it means there are more classified workers who are experiencing food insecurities. If the district administration truly believes the 4J essential workers are valued, they need to show it in the wages and benefits. Without those things, I'm afraid the district will harm its relationship with their essential workers. In conclusion, I urge each and every one of you to consider the classified worker and, quite frankly, take action to support the statements that were made to the media during COVID-19 restrictions and prove.
Thank you, Mary Beth.
Can we not cut people off?
Next, we have Dani Crowley coming in.
Can, can we make that something that we agree to at some point, that we not cut people off?
Laurel, at the end of the meeting, do you want to add that to the future, to a future meeting, so we can consider an adjustment to our time limit?
Is that a policy or rule right now? But so, I mean, I don't think that's, I think that's something that can just be done.
For now, let's listen to Dani Crowley, and then we can hear from someone who has that answer. Welcome, Dani.
Hi. Thank you for letting me speak this evening, and I totally agree with Laurel that that would be a great way to have the better respect for each other. And in that vein, I would like to propose that we return to in-person board meetings and attendance and speaking. It, just as Andy said, within the schools and the activities that are going on, it's the community, it's gathering together that brings us together. And when we're on screens and divided, that's another obstacle to have to just navigate. And I don't think it's healthy or mentally healthy for anyone. So that's my first request. Also, student, I, I request that parents and caregivers, grandparents be allowed to participate in the schools. I have not seen any, anything on the website of North Eugene High School alluding to that, so I'd like to know about that. And I think that would be very healthy for our entire community and the students and, and of course, very helpful for the teachers. My son is a 13th year student. He needs to wrap up some credits. He's changed course. He's going to become a therapist. So needs to have the modified diploma instead of the extended diploma. I have gotten on the EO A website, and it is completely inaccurate. There are no phone numbers that are correct. Paula Nolan is still listed as the, as the principal. She has been gone since June. Who runs and is responsible for the, the website design? All other high schools have a vibrant and, and active and up-to-date source. Do you know who is responsible?
Unfortunately, the way our comments are set up, it's not back and forth, Dani, but this is a question that we can get back to you on.
I would very much appreciate that because these kids, 200-plus kids and the teachers, we, they're stopped completely. And the kids can't have agency in a situation that does not allow the agency to exist. And when you do not have agency, you have depression and anxiety. And this is just another form of the system not helping the kids. It's hindering the kids, and this just won't be acceptable. The third thing I would just like, or the fourth thing I'd like to say is that our, our reading and math levels are imperative, that we get them, the, any and all resources to the teachers and schools. Smaller class sizes, EAs, tutors, whatever it is that would help the kids to be able to be up to reading level and math levels by the third grade. Because by the time they hit middle school and high school, they are done. Like, they drop out like flies.
Thank you. This is, this is really helpful. I appreciate this input.
Okay, I guess that's, the time is up.
Time is up in a gentle way, I say it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, good night.
Good night.
Now it's the time on our agenda to hear from our employee groups. Tonight, we will hear from Sabrina Gordon from the Eugene Education Association.
Sabrina is coming in now, and she'll be on camera soon.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thanks, Maya. My name is Sabrina Gordon, and I'm speaking on behalf of the members of Eugene Education Association tonight. This first week of school is always an exciting time. In my many conversations with educators over the past several days, two themes really stood out. When licensed staff first returned to work in August, there was a renewed sense of optimism and positive energy, something that hasn't been felt widely for the last couple of years because of the many challenges brought by COVID. But the other theme I've heard in nearly every conversation with licensed staff is that they didn't have enough time to get ready for students. Most report back to work a week before students arrive. This year, it was even a bit earlier. There's a lot to be done to prepare for students. Setting up classrooms, reviewing curriculum, making lesson plans, creating Canvas modules, learning about incoming students, creating differentiated instruction, planning and reviewing behavior support plans, becoming familiar with individual students' medical needs, reading IEPs and 504 plans, collaborating with peers, adjusting schedules, integrating Avid strategies, sorting through new materials, annual reading of district policies, writing educator growth goals, and so much more. The list is literally endless. And how much time do teachers get to do these things? Our collective bargaining agreement guarantees eight hours, one day. Would any of you be able to do all of that in one eight-hour day? But that's all that's provided to teachers and licensed staff during pre-service week. All the other days of that week, every hour, every minute, were filled with required trainings and meetings. Don't get me wrong, much of the professional development received glowing reviews and appreciation from people I've talked to. Andrettiya Fitzgerald's sessions on UDL, Content PD delivered by Artosa's, and Conscious Discipline for the Primary Grades are just a few examples of excellent professional development that people attended. But no time was left to get to work on this new learning or to do any of the multitude of tasks that I just listed, except the eight hours guaranteed in our contract. It shouldn't take a written agreement in a contract to protect time for us to do our jobs. There should be a culture in this district of providing more time and trusting in the professionalism of educators to choose how to use that time. This starts with pre-service week and includes every week of the school year. Instead, every minute that is not protected by the contract is gobbled up, leaving teachers and licensed staff to work on their own time, many before the paid work year began and during Labor Day weekend, time that should have been their own. And they did that because we won't let our students down. But it leaves staff with a feeling of starting the year already behind. The opportunity to help educators feel supported in their work from the beginning of this new school year has already passed us by. But with every missed opportunity, a new one can be found. I encourage 4J to grow in the practice of trusting educators to have more control over the precious resource of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina. I believe that is the only employee group we are hearing from tonight. So we will move on to comments and committee reports by individual board members. Does anybody want to go first? If not, I, I can do that, but if anybody else wants to, oh, I see Alicia is raising her hand. Go ahead, Alicia.
Hey, thanks, Maya. Did not have any committee work this last couple of weeks, but I did have a chance to attend the back-to-school event, and people have already spoken highly of it, and I would just echo that, give it my two thumbs up. You did a great job, Maya, sharing from the board. Andy left you out. I wanted to point that out, but I caught you. Just give you a hard time, Andy. But you did an excellent job. And also, I really wanted to thank all the board members for the time yesterday for the four-hour retreat. I felt like we went deeper than we have in the past around each of the topics we brought forward for our goals. And I feel confident that we are going to have some amazing goals that I think we'll be able to get some traction on because we're doing the work up front, and we're kind of all coming together to, to make that happen. So thank you again, Maya and Gordon, for facilitating and whoever put those little post-it notes together on the screen that looked like it took a lot of time, but it was really helpful to add those. And I look forward to following that event up. Thank you.
Thanks, Alicia. Somebody want to go next? Oh, I see Judy's hand, and then Kirti, you can follow Judy.
I'm gonna sort of keep in the, good evening, first of all. Thank you to the, the people who spoke tonight. Definitely had some good messages to share, but I'm gonna keep in the, the spirit of back to school. It's always a really exciting time, I know for me, and I just was around my grandkids today and their parents, and just everyone was so happy to be seeing each other in person. And I heard parents were just greeting each other in the hallways and the briefways, and just, there was a very good spirit, so that's exciting. And I really started to reflect and feel a lot of gratitude for all the people. I mean, it's really incredible to keep a district running and then to, to also get going every, every school year. And I just want to talk a little bit about all that has gone on over the summer and to get going. And I did listen to Sabrina. I agree, there's never enough time, and I'd like to make sure that people, you know, shifting gears from being off, coming back to work, there's so much to do. But, you know, over the summer, I wanted to thank our building and construction team for all the needed repairs that happened and the projects that were completed, just to highlight, you know, opening Edison School on time, finishing the Gillum addition on time, ready for the fall, getting camus underway, keeping the North Eugene High School moving ahead. There's an unbelievable amount of, to manage and to track. To thank our teachers and teaching assistants for getting their rooms and materials ready, but I also know they were in continuing professional development, just the usual professional development, but also getting acquainted with new curriculum in English Language Arts and Social Studies. That's a lot to do. Thanks for our school administrators getting ready to welcome our, our parents, our volunteers, our students back in the buildings, to the custodians and grounds and maintenance crews. I know when I walk inside a building and see the, the floor is shining, it's just, you, you just feel a respect and a pride. And to transportation staff for routing and rerouting and getting kids to school, and to our nutrition services staff for continuing our goal of serving all kids and increasing our scratch cooking with local ingredients and healthy foods and sustainable practices. So it's a lot, it's a heavy lift. I also was at the Welcome Back Event at Churchill, and I found it really uplifting just seeing, again, being the same, sharing space. And I just wanted to thank, I mean, all our speakers were wonderful, but I wanted to give a special thanks to Jennifer Skirlock for sharing her why of being a teacher and educator. It was dynamic. It was a moving speech and really inspirational. We're so fortunate to have all the quality educators on our 4J team. Last, I want to also, like Alicia, thank our fellow board members. I really appreciated the in-depth conversation we were having about what goals people have and what they really meant by those goals, and seeing the commonalities, a lot of the commonalities. So I know I'll have a report about EEF. I'm on that committee, and hopefully the legislative committee at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Judy. Kirti, are you still wanting to go next?
Sure. Like I said, I don't like waiting till the end, because everybody said what I want to say already. But I also wanted to say my thank you to everyone who's keeping this district running, from the groundskeeper up to the superintendent. Like, it's, it's really fascinating, the amount I've learned just in the four months that have been on here about the number of employees, the work that's being done, the stuff that we don't actually get to see as just consumers of education on here and the recipients of that. So thank you for everyone. I also wanted to kind of take on what Sabrina said on, about starting this year with the optimism that hadn't kind of been there the last couple of years with COVID. It's, I would like to do what we can this year to see what we can do to maintain that optimism throughout the year, and I think that's going to come. And I think that's going to come with actually direct action from our board and with our district on there. On some of the goals that we did outline yesterday, to echo Judy, I think the commonalities were really also encouraging on there and also to take on to a little bit of what Jennifer Skirlock did say in her speech of the why. She brought up very, very closely held stories of her upbringing here in Eugene and how her mother's upbringing was and to certain extent highlighted the amount of work that has still yet to be done and to making people feel like they belong in this community. And I am raising two biracial children here in this town and I would like to do everything that we can to make them feel as welcome and appreciated and have that kind of belonging that has taken generations and sometimes is not even there yet. So that's a little bit of a focus of where I want to look at this year is make sure that the kids start the year and end the year in the same level of optimism and a sense of belonging that they came in with. Thanks.
Thanks, Kirti. Gordon?
Thanks. I also, like Andy, just feel like I can't, I have to start the meeting with acknowledging the heaviness of having lost another student and that my heart goes out to their family and, and friends and the community. Other than that, my, my big thank you is to Maya, who I know prior to joining the board spent more hours volunteering in 4J schools than I believe any other human being in history and I think is now spending more hours as board chair than anybody who's held that position. There are a number of people thanked Maya and I for the work that went into yesterday's retreat, but it was 95% Maya, so I'm, I'm thankful for that. I, I know the return to school is something that students probably look forward to with a combination of excitement and dread. And unfortunately, I think the same is true for most staff. Excitement is obvious and dread because of the tremendous number of burdens that are placed on educators. I hope we can get to the point where educators can greet the new year with less of a feeling of dread of being about to be overwhelmed by a wave of demands that are impossible to get all met. And again, you know, we've talked about this before because we're limited in what we can do, the cost money. We need to look especially at everything we can do that doesn't cost money, which I think includes eliminating whatever bureaucratic mandates we can get rid of and echoing Sabrina Gordon's and, and Kirti's comments also includes giving educators much more autonomy over things like determining what kind of professional development training would really be useful and supporting educators' ability to act as creative professionals by creating more planning time and more support for developing innovative classes, new units or new ways of teaching our content. We all say how important it is for each student to find at least one class that engages them during the day and one adult who they feel they have a relationship with. And we can't do that by forcing all classes to be the same and taught all in the uniform way. We need to create more variety, both in the teaching topics and methods, and to create more opportunity for students to make personal connections with adults in the schools. I believe that those goals are widely shared by many board members and by district leadership and hope that this is the year we can make them a reality. Finally, I'm thrilled that we're starting the school year for the first time in several decades with three elementary school librarians. And I appreciate how hard the other 4J librarians are working and district staff and leadership are working to support those librarians and ensure their success and bring new opportunities to the students in their school. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon. Michelle?
Um, I appreciate all my fellow board members' comments and am in alignment with everything you mentioned. I, I must emphasize my appreciation for our talented and dedicated staff. As far as committees, I've been working with some of our administrators and board members on Student Voice Committee and we're making good progress. I think it's vital to make connections with students and have their input in decision-making. And along those lines, I am patiently waiting for the Equity Committee to get started because that intersects with Student Voice. And I had the pleasure of meeting with some of our librarians and our district librarian and I had the pleasure of visiting the Edison Library, which is beautiful and understaffed. So I will be keeping an eye on what's happening in our school libraries and will be advocating for them to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Michelle. Laurel, do you want to go next? I'm happy to go if you don't want to.
I'll go, I'll be quick. I always say that. I'll try to be quick. I will, I will, I have been, I asked to and was appointed the Chair of the New Mental Health Committee. And I am excited about this role because, and I'm also excited about this role in our district at this time. Because this is something we as a board advocated for last year and now we're really starting the work. Rob has sent me the Oregon Department of Education Mental Health Toolkit and I just want to read something that I really, this is something where we want to start from. "Mental health, which encompasses social, emotional, cognitive, and behavioral well-being, is central to building a school culture and climate where all students and all who serve them thrive. The Oregon Department of Education's Integrated Model of Mental Health centers on health and well-being in the confluence of four interconnected pillars of practice. One, trauma-informed care. Two, social, emotional learning. Three, racial equity. And four, asset-focused, evidence-based, or field-tested prevention and intervention programs within multi-tiered systems of support." I want all of that and we don't have all of that, but it is something that I've been assured by our leadership, this is that everyone wants and it's going to happen. How this is going to happen is that we, and I hope people have their listening ears on right now, yep, that was for you teachers, that we're going to be asking community educators, those in the community that already are working in mental health and also those that have, have lived experience with what it means to work with the school district with a, a child with mental health or it being somebody who has been in the school district with mental health, student voice, educator voice, some of the board voice and admin voice. The way we get to a stronger community is by supporting those that do not feel that they have any support. I'm very excited about this. I'm really grateful to the board for putting this at the forefront this year and seeing the need and for our leadership to actually are driving, asking where we're at and sending me things and keeping us moving forward. It's a seed change and it's a welcome seed change because I want to get to a place and I want to declare it, I'll declare it now, I want a zero-tolerance policy as far as losing another child to suicide. That doesn't mean it won't happen. What it does mean is we are doing everything that we possibly can as a community to prevent it. And, and that will mean that people know where to go and what to do and won't feel lost. So, thank you. That's all I have for today. If you were listening and you're like, ooh, I'm interested, please reach out. You can either reach me at the Board, my Board email or if you don't know my Board email, just put board@4j.lane.edu. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurel. So I'll, I'll wrap us up with my comments for today. Most of our students now have had their first day under their belts. Schedules have been or are being finalized. Buses have carried students to school, computers have been logged into, breakfasts and lunches enjoyed. Sparkling clean hallways have been packed with students and classrooms have been bustling. All of this is possible thanks to the tremendous effort and long hours put in by our staff. I want to take a moment to recognize that many of those hours were gifted to our district by staff. Without these volunteered gifted hours, we would not have been ready yesterday to receive ninth graders and today to receive almost everyone else. Lucky seventh and eighth graders got to stretch summer out by one glorious extra day. If you passed by a school building on Labor Day, you were likely to see a parking lot that showed evidence of a building with folks actively preparing. Those folks, your commitment to our students is beyond commendable and I am deeply grateful for you and your work. It is not lost on me that on Labor Day, a federal holiday dedicated to honoring workers, we had staff scurrying to get ready. Because this year, like many before it, our prescribed schedule did not allocate enough time to get ready during in-service week. I applaud our staff for rising to the need to open doors today. But even more so, I want to express my commitment to supporting our superintendent when he works with staff to schedule next year's pre-service week to diligently carve out more protected time for our staff to do the seemingly endless hours of prep work. I learned today that Oregon was the first state to designate Labor Day as an official public holiday. Let's carry on in that spirit and focus on ways to shift our pre-service schedule to ensure that Labor Day is the day when our staff can breathe, spend time with loved ones, and return on Tuesday energized and excited to open the doors to our buses and our buildings, to our students, instead of exhausted and discouraged. And then we can tackle all the other volunteered hours that extend throughout the school year. Labor Day can serve as our starting point, much as it signals the impending start of the new school year. Our educators deserve this and our students deserve this. Speaking of starting the school year, the board had the honor, as mentioned already, of attending the back-to-school gathering in the Churchill Courtyard. It was such a delight to connect with many of you in person, but even more delightful was witnessing you all reconnecting with one another. I want to thank Sabrina Gordon and Emel de Cortez, Seth Faflin, Dana Fleming, and Andy Dye for your comments. And like everyone else, I want to highlight Jennifer Skirlock and thank her for her moving words. Jennifer, your speech flooded the courtyard and I'm sure the Zoom audience with emotion, gratitude, and inspiration. Thank you for being raw and vulnerable and also demonstrating strength and passion. You left a mark on me that I truly cherish. In committee news, I attended meetings of the Mental Health and Student Voice subcommittees. As Laurel mentioned, in both, we actually, it was actually in both, we selected a person to chair the committee and if folks have either questions for or thoughts to share with these chairs, as Laurel mentioned, you can reach out to her, Laurel O'Rourke, about work on mental health and Michelle Shu regarding Student Voice. I look forward to the North Region Visioning Committee convening. Working towards a plan for the Kelly Middle School and Eugene-Gottwin School communities is one of the board's highest priorities. Michelle and I will represent this board on this committee and we are both eager to collaborate with district leadership, teachers, parents, and students to create a plan that best, that best supports all the programs currently sharing the site at 850 Howard Avenue. Last thing I leave you with is a request. My favorite part of board work is seeing our district in action. Last year I had the privilege of being invited to visit about 20 classrooms. This year I'm excited already to be invited to tour the transportation headquarters and do a ride-along with a 4J school bus driver. Art Hart, our Transportation Director, extended that invitation when he learned that I am one of the few people that he has identified as growing up wanting to be a bus driver. Please invite me to visit your classroom, your kitchen, your warehouse, or wherever else you do your magic. The more I get to see, the more people I get to talk to, the better I understand the context of both our challenges and our triumphs. I look forward to connecting with you. In closing, I would like to take a moment to express my profound sadness at learning of a student passing yesterday. My heart is with the South Eugene High School community and I send my deepest condolences to the family and friends of this student. A cherished young person is no longer with us and it is important we take a moment to honor this life. Though it is hardly enough, let us take one minute to sit in silence and join our community in mourning this loss. That was hardly enough and there is no magic number, but I do appreciate everyone joining me. The next item on our agenda is our consent group. There are three items on the consent agenda tonight. Is there a motion? I see Gordon has his hand raised. Thank you. Is there a second?
My motion is to adopt.
Yeah, you probably should. Thank you, Gordon. I think we're all a little distracted. Go ahead with your motion, please, Gordon, and then. Seconded by Judy. So approval of the consent agenda is moved by Gordon Leifer and seconded by Judy Newman. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand and keep it raised. I see hands raised by Alicia Hayes, Maya Rabasa, Laurel O'Rourke, Judy Newman, Michelle Shu, Gordon Leifer, and Kirti Hasijah Kaufman. Thus, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next on the agenda is items for information. We will start with a back-to-school update from Superintendent Dye. Andy, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. As I shared earlier, today was our first official day back and we welcomed nearly 17,000 students back to our schools, alternative schools, charter schools, online schools. Really, really exciting. They felt hopeful as we began to see the sights and hear the sounds of teaching and learning. It felt really familiar in a way that the last two years have not. Excited, students arrived at some of our buildings for the very first time in the district and I want to extend a special welcome to all new families to Eugene School District 4J. We're really pleased that you chose us. We also saw a lot of other people reuniting with peers that they've known throughout their entire childhood that they maybe haven't seen over the, the summer and adults that they trust and place their faith in. It's a really beautiful time of the year in our district. We do have new staff and students settling into some new spaces. Got the, the new teaching and learning spaces in Gillum. We had students checking out the repaired gymnasium at Kelly YG, walking into new halls at Edison, and then the folks at Camus Ridge who are, I guess, getting comfortable in their new Airbnb school for the next two years as their school is built. We very much realize that like moving into a new apartment or a new home, there's going to be a period of adjustment where we find those things on punch lists that need slight tweaks, we need some things changed, new routines learned, and we make these new spaces our own. But overall, I can say just a really resounding thank you to the Eugene community for investing in our students, investing in our schools, investing in our staff, and I look forward to inviting our community into new spaces to celebrate with us. Also want to again thank the folks in facilities and our custodial staff for the incredible task of getting our schools in shape for a new school year. Some truly amazing team effort to get, to make that happen. Some truly amazing team effort to get, to make that happen. I can also report that as our classrooms fill up, we are up in overall numbers compared to this time last year. We continue traditionally to grow over the month of September, especially in lower grades. But to me, this fairly dramatic increase frankly, in overall numbers compared to October of last year demonstrates a sense of, of trust and confidence in four J schools and we hope to make you proud and, and feel like you made a good decision in trusting us. As often occurs at the start of the year, students don't show up in nice, even increments spread across all grade levels and in all classes. So thank the board for the planning and the allocation of resources that allowed us to swiftly deploy additional teaching staff to address class sizes and ensure stable, equitable, and reasonable class sizes across the system with relatively little disruption to students and families through shifts after the start of the school year. Finally, I'd like to thank our associations for their partnership and coming together to thoughtfully approach the allocation of resources provided through House Bill forty thirty, not at all a done deal. But together we will find ways to demonstrate our support for the truly amazing staff who show up every day to support and educate our students. Really, really excited for, for the year to come. I know that it will not be without its challenges, but it absolutely will not be without lifelong memories that students and teachers make together. I want to continue to invite people to have conversations with me through my one hundred chats. It has been really enlightening to me and very enjoyable to meet people that I just otherwise wouldn't and hear their perspectives. I, I too got the opportunity to go see the transportation department and it's an amazing group of people. They're really tight. And it's a whole different world over at the Transport Depot. Maya, you're gonna have a blast going over there. And with that, what I'd like to do is leave you with a glimpse into the faces of the students who count on us for the support and care that they need as they grow into healthy individuals as they learn day in and day out. Jennifer, or excuse me, Jen McCully's gonna help me by showing a, a bit of a video clip and some images that were captured throughout the district today.
If everyone could bear with us, we're having a little technical difficulty. We'll be showing that shortly.
I'm sure that that happened frequently throughout the district today. It's only fair that it happens to us in a board meeting.
Well, unfortunately, it looks like it is not accepting the quick time players, so I think we're gonna keep everyone moving along and we look forward to sharing it out to the world on our website and on our social posts.
Thank you. It's definitely a bummer not to see those faces, but we appreciate knowing that we can check it out on our website on, and if you are part of the Facebook community, I'm hoping we add that there. Thanks, Jenna. Now we move on to a bond update. I'd like to invite Kyle Tucker, Chief Operations Officer, and Ryan Spain, Director of Facilities, to share with us.
Good evening, Chair Rabasta, members of the board. Kyle Tucker, Chief Operations Officer, along with Ryan Spain, Director of Facilities. We're gonna provide a bond update along with some summer projects. Lisa is being so gracious to us by sharing the PowerPoint with us. That way we don't have to try to navigate that at the same time. Ryan's gonna start with some updates on the big builds and then I will follow that up with some summer project work.
Thank you, Kyle. So good evening. First slide here is on North Eugene. Obviously, we're still on target for our fall of twenty-three opening. We're continuing with our interior finishes. I'd say probably thirty or forty percent of the classrooms are already complete and, you know, and they're finished status without furniture at this point, so it's exciting to see when you get out there and see the inside. The main parking lot was completed right at the end of summer here and is in use with the existing facility currently. So exciting to see that piece of it done. It's kind of fun to see the gravelly areas get finished up with their, their finished materials, the blacktop and the sidewalks and all of the landscaping coming together. So it's looking really nice. Continuing to work on site finishes around the building, so the drive aisle that runs around the building, they're starting to put curbs in now and hopefully, you know, towards the end of the fall here, we'll start to see some more paving going on around the building, start to see more of the finishes on the exterior of the building coming together. We're working on furniture selection and we're almost complete with that to get that order in so that the furniture shows up in time for, for opening. And we're, you know, gonna be working on developing a plan for the big move because obviously we've done a lot of elementary schools, but this is a much bigger event and so, you know, be a lot of planning and effort that goes into the coordination of all the, the, the moving of, of the teachers across the way here. So, next slide. Edison, so as you guys have already discussed some tonight, we were lucky enough to open this up on time and first day in school today and had a conversation with the principal earlier this evening and it sounds like everything went pretty smooth. Had lots of happy faces and lots of smiles and so I think at the end of the day, that's, it's about the kids and happy to see that they are excited to be in the new building and so got them moved over from Willard obviously over the summer and they've got the school all set up and ready to go. We have a few remaining items at the school just because of supply chain issues that we've continued to battle throughout the construction world right now. But nothing that's affecting operations of the building. So we'll get those things taken care of hopefully, you know, in October and we should be completely wrapped up with that school and then we're in the process and having conversations about an open house to allow the public to get in and check out the new digs. The next one, Gillum, same kind of situation here, opened up on time. Everybody was excited to expand that, expand the, the extra four classrooms here at the site and other auxiliary gym to give them some more space for what seems to be a never-ending growth of the community there. And so we're excited to have that extra space for them and this is another one that we're working on, an open house plan to open it to the general public for people to come see what was done. Camus Ridge, again, you guys discussed a little bit here tonight, so, you know, we had them moved out over the summer and into their temporary location over at the Willard swing site and we, we completed the design obviously late last, late last school year and incorporating stakeholder, stakeholder feedback with regards to parking lot reductions, a full sidewalk around, as you can see in this new image that surrounds the lower field and some, you know, additional windows as part of the new exterior colors and selections that the community helped us pick. So a lot of that stuff has been incorporated now to the design and moving forward with construction. Abatement was completed in late August and we moved right into demolition, which actually started yesterday and we're working on a, a link to our webcam so we can get that up and people can watch that from the community perspective. Oh, and we did, I forgot to mention, sorry, that, you know, we did quite a bit of salvage at the, at the campus site, which was kind of exciting between the district salvage and items that the, the school had requested be saved and reused at the new school and we had some local nonprofits that we invited to come in and salvage materials as well and I think the number was just short of twenty-eight thousand pounds of salvage materials that some of our partners came out and brought out of the building. So lots of good recycling. The other piece of it is the demolition goes forward, the, the materials that come off the demolition will go to eco sort and about ninety percent of those materials end up recycled in some fashion, which is really good news as well. Kyle's taking this.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Ryan. So along with obviously the big building projects, we have several summer bond projects and then some other just summer work that goes along with it. We didn't include all of those projects, the, the list would be too long. We just wanted to try to highlight some of the, kind of the bigger areas. So we have some reader boards. Kennedy and CI Reader Board is up and running. The Kelly YG Board is actually going to be installed tomorrow. Gillum's due to a supply chain is out a little bit. We were able to complete some roofing projects along with some flooring replacements. And we have started the process around CTE and entry vestibule design work. And that is underway in preparation so we can get started with that for next summer. The last slide are just some facility improvements. As mentioned earlier by some folks, Kelly Middle Inner Gym Roof Repair was complete. We were actually thankful that it was ahead of schedule by a couple of days. So we were able to get that completed and, and ready to go through when staff and students return. You approved tonight, obviously, some DDC controls and some painting work that has gone on along with several sites around flooring. And then that has also been mentioned tonight by the chair, Ryan and I are a part of the North Region Planning Meetings. We will be a part of that process so that as the direction is given, we're ready to go with whatever things need to be planned and prepared for of any of those updates. It's also been said tonight by several board members, superintendent. Again, I would also like to thank our staff, facility staff, custodial staff on all of the work that was done this summer in preparation to get buildings ready to go. It's a tremendous amount of work to have those buildings get ready to go, the thirty-five of them. And then you get a kind of a snippet of not only the work that we have on top of that, but then we have the four major projects going on at the same time. So we've got several things going. And again, I can't extend my thanks enough to Ryan and his leadership, Art and his leadership, Trevor, and all the folks that, that make the things happen. So I can't, I can't, can't say enough about that. So with that, thank you. We appreciate the time tonight.
Thank you both so much. That was a very thorough and quick update. I see Gordon has his hand raised. If you're willing to stick around and answer a couple of questions, that would be very helpful. Thank you. Gordon?
I, I just have one, Kyle, which is I saw that one of the items was about the CTE forestry program at Sheldon. And I just wanted to ask if you could say a couple of words about that. Is there some, was there something being done that is gonna enable that program to happen in the way we want it to do because of a building redesign or adding some kind of something to the facility?
Can we take it?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, yeah, we have, there's a space that Sheldon had identified for the, the forestry program at, at the school. And so we walked the space with CTE leadership in the school and defined kind of some renovation work that was necessary to make that space work for what they were trying to do. And so that, that design is under, we, we finished the design over the summer and there were a few items that we were actually able to complete over the summer, but there's still additional items that need to be completed that would likely occur over winter break. But so it's, it's something that's in process. They're using the space currently as we speak, so. Where I guess we'll start tomorrow.
Great. I've just, I particularly appreciate when we can, or when you can, you know, take advantage of having to redo something in a school to make the CTE programs work better by having the space fit their needs. Thanks.
Does anybody else have questions for Kyle Tucker and Ryan Spain while we have them here? Great. Well, thank you both so much. This was extremely helpful and I want to encourage you to enjoy your evening. Thank you. The next item on our agenda are items for action. Up first, we have approving revisions to board policy JHCA slash JHCB. Immunizations, physical examinations, vision screening, eye examination, and dental screening. The recommended changes are suggested to help policy better align with existing rules and best practice for enrolling students. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Superintendent Dye to lead us through this.
Not a very involved procession through. We had some changes that were reflected in board policies due to changes in law or best practice. You had prior to this conversation received a clean copy and then a a copy where the changes could be tracked. No significant changes really, mostly around the information that we have to keep dental screenings, et cetera. Happy to take any questions if, if you have them, but just letting you know that the, that I would recommend that the board approve the revision to board policy JHCA slash JHCB.
Judy?
Um, this isn't really a question. It's just wanting to express appreciation to our state. You know, these requirements, we've had hearing screenings and we've had physical exams for many, many years, but over the last year since I think twenty eighteen, we've added dental health as well as vision. And those are things that are really so critically important to take care of and catch early for kids. So I'm, I, I know, I just wanted to just express my appreciation. These are super important activities that our district does.
Thank you, Judy. Laurel?
Um. It's my understanding is like dental, we've been doing this for quite a while because we do this in conjunction with public health and they're funded for this. So this is, when you say kind of just align it to what is already happening, is that my understanding? Okay, thank you. And, and yes, I agree with Judy. This is important and there's probably more screenings that we could probably look towards, but and if anybody knows the name, maybe we should propose it. Not right now.
Thank you, Laurel. That's a good point. Anybody else have any questions for Superintendent Dye on this topic? Seeing no questions, I'm wondering if someone would like to make a motion?
I, I move that we adopt this.
Thank you, Michelle. So moved by Gordon Lefer and seconded by Michelle Shu. All those in favor of adopting the recommended changes to JHCA and JHCB? Say aye and raise your hand and keep your hand raised and I see Laurel O'Rourke, Maya Rabasa, Judy Newman, Michelle Shu, Gordon Lefer, Alicia Hayes, and Kirti Hasijah Kaufman voting affirmatively. So this passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Then next on the agenda, the action, the items for action is the item added at the beginning of the meeting to revisit the topic of the October first retreat. I'm gonna go ahead and pass it over to Alicia.
Okay, thanks. So what I would propose if people are comfortable with it is that we take the October first and continue the work that we did. We started yesterday. We, we, like we, many of us talked, we went deep with those conversations. And I'm hoping we can kind of continue with that momentum to get our goals ready to go. It's September. That would get us hopefully our goals ready, first part of October, which I think is important. So that's why I put it on the agenda. Thanks, Maya.
Alicia, I appreciate your very gentle language, but would you make that a motion so we can open up discussion? Not to put you on the spot.
I was supposed to make the motion and then talk to the motion, but I like to do things. I just like to mix things. Okay. Okay. I move that we change the topic for the media, the retreat on October first from a team-building retreat to a goal setting, continuing our goal-setting retreat. Is that clear for everybody? I can change the language if it's not.
I'm just curious if you want to also suggest moving that retreat to online. That's all.
Thanks, Maya. I kind of assumed we'd still be online, but that is a very good point. I thought it worked well online. I hope if people are comfortable with it online, that we keep it that way. So there are the two things. We change the subject and we keep it online. In a nutshell.
Thank you, Alicia. Do we have a second for this motion? I see Gordon seconding, so moved by Alicia to shift the topic to finish our work from last night and to move the retreat to online and seconded by Gordon Lefer. Let's open discussion. I see Laurel's hand up.
Um. I'm interested, it's most likely that we would still be online. I'm interested, it's most likely that we would still be online. I, I'm interested, is there a reason why? That was said specifically, was it, we were supposed to be in person? Is that why? Okay. Okay. The, I, I, I think either way is fine. But also the, the, the part I and I guess this, there's the motion, as you said, it doesn't allow for this in the discussion. I really do want to work on our goals, but I do, I do also appreciate the the part, like in my thinking about this, this week or this few hours this today. And having a conversation. The reason we have so many equity goals is because the work in the district is just not happening at the level that we are feeling the need to be like, we need to do this. We need to make this happen because it's just not happening at the level of what and it has been for a while where it needs to be. So I do want to hear from, and it doesn't have to be right now, but I do want to hear from Andy and Rob and those doing the work of what these plans are because that could probably change some of the things that we have proposed because what I was used to last year, that there's pretty much nothing. You know, there's so a few things, but there's really no real active equity work on the level of what was proposed in these goals at our board retreat yesterday. So I'm, I under, I think I understand the approach of taking it back to the, to the superintendent now a little bit more in the sense of what is happening? What is, what, where are we at? What is the plan for our equity work at the district and all the different levels? And I, I, I'm not putting Andy and Rob on the spot right now to tell me, where's the dossier? I'm just saying. I think that's kind of why we ended up with this pretty huge list, which was almost everything could be tied to equity. Almost everything on that list could be tied to it. And I think there's a reason for that. So I just want to add that to the conversation in that perhaps there could be a conversation or, or a report to the board of, on those topics before we get to that time if.
So Laurel, I appreciate that question and I'm going to jump in if that's okay with Andy and Rob. I want to make sure that we think about the, the, the motion that Alicia made, but I do not want to lose track of what you're saying. And I want to let you know that we have tentatively, but tentatively with like a whole lot of intention to see it happen. A work session scheduled for our, before our next meeting, where we will be introduced to our regional equity managers and it would be a perfect time to incorporate a a time to receive information about where we are, where we hope to be. And if it's that, that seems like the perfect time to include that, which would mean that we do that on September twenty first in time to impact our conversation on October first. I'm going to go ahead and go to Kirti and then I see Andy has his hand raised. Kirti, if Andy is responding to that specifically, is it okay if we jump to Andy first? Thank you, Kirti.
I would just say, I think I'm pretty confident in speaking for both Rob and I and the entire cabinet level team ultimately that the conversation that was held last night and that is being proposed to happen on the first is very helpful to us. There's a lot of synergy in between district initiatives around high quality instruction and access and advancement for students and what the board wants to see and that alignment. Being able to make sense of what you would like to see for the district helps us really condense our efforts and focus our efforts so that you know, we're, we're using time and treasure and talent in the best way possible to move the district forward. To the extent that that helps people consider the motion, it's really helpful to us.
Thank you, Andy. Kirti?
Yeah, just had a quick question on the motion, which was that are we looking at replacing the team building activity with this? Or are we doing it in addition to? And if that is the case that we are taking the time with that, then necessitate another piece of a retreat. I'm just kind of curious about what the like topic actually changes to it. And I'm fully in support of actually do we doing the goal, I mean, doing the goals again and continuing on that conversation?
That, that's a great question. So just to recap and bring everyone up to speed and remind everyone at the last meeting, I believe it was Judy Newman who proposed or made a motion that we have two of these. I called it relational health. Team building is a perfect synonym for that meetings. So this would be replacing the October first one and we had agreed to also do one on October twenty fourth. And I do recognize, Kirti, that you were unable to attend that last meeting. October twenty fourth was designated because it was the very first day that everyone was going to be back in town. And hopefully by October, excuse me, October twenty fourth, we will be able to meet in person. We intend to share a meal together and do some relational health building. So, so it will replace one of those sessions, but we still have the opportunity for another round. So it, it displaces some of that time. However, Alicia was not going to be able to attend that. She has a prior engagement out of state. So this would allow Alicia to actually attend all three sessions of the retreat and hopefully that, that works for everyone. Laurel?
Yes, um, could you tell, show me where the explanation for the team building or tell me what email that is in and how that's going to work? I, I think I've missed that.
That is going to be planned by a facilitator. So that is, will be forthcoming. And now we have until October twenty fourth. So I anticipate that the next few meetings will probably influence what that looks like.
So, so it's, there's not something that I missed that we've already received information about?
I don't think so.
Okay, so, um, and when we talk about a facilitator, this is going to be a facilitator from outside of our community?
Not necessarily. I know that was brought up last night, but it was not something that got unanimous approval. So we can revisit that, but no, that's not necessarily the intention.
It was brought up in a board meeting where we could vote?
No, you, it was brought up in the retreat last night when we discussed our meeting agreements, but prior to that, there was no agreement on the board to only use outside of the community facilitators.
Okay, so how, maybe I'll bring that up at the end of the meeting to have a, add that to the agenda. Thanks.
Okay, that's perfect. Thank you. Gordon, I saw your hand flash. Do you have something? No? Does, is there any more discussion around the motion to shift the topic on October first to finish the work of last night and shift the location of the meeting to Zoom? In that case, I'd like to call the vote and ask that everyone who is wanting to approve this motion, though I and raise your hand and keep it raised. I see Laurel O'Rourke, myself, Maya Rabasa, Gordon Leifer, Judy Newman, Michelle Shu, Alicia Hayes, and Kirti Hasijah Kaufman, which means that the, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And be noted that we will now have our October first retreat on Zoom and we will complete the work we started last night. The next item on our agenda is item for action at a future meeting. These items are items that are up for information, but not up for action necessarily tonight. The first, before we start, Gordon, did you have something you wanted to say?
I, I just wanted, I thought that this might be the place that we could just quickly settle the issue that Laurel raised earlier about, are we, if we're cutting off speakers, it seemed like I guess maybe I'm projecting that it would be easy to agree that we would do the, the soft way that you ended up doing, Maya, with the second speaker rather than having somebody cut off. And I don't know if that needs to be a vote, but I know that Laurel, you'd raise that for something to be addressed at the end of the meeting. And it seems like something we could take action on now without having to put up for future action at another meeting.
So are you making a motion to amend our agenda to include that as an item for action right now?
Yes. That's what I had thought we had, had said before, but other, but if that's needed, yes.
Okay. Alicia, I'm seeing you raising your hands.
I, I would just say without objection, I would like us to do that. And I have that sense from this group that they would like it. I know the sign was fuzzy when Lisa was holding it up, which made it harder for the speaker. Right. But I would like the chair to be the one, so without objection, I would, I would love the chair to be the one that cuts them off and not give that to the person. And so Maya, if you just, I think you're okay doing it. But it looks like you have everybody's agreement. Just a thought.
Okay, so if we want to do this without objection, I just want to articulate that you all are giving me the authority to do a soft cutoff versus a firm cutoff by dismissing via the Zoom removal of the speaker. Yes, is that, is that what we're, what we're hoping for? So I, I, I ask then that we can possibly revisit this conversation when we're back in person. It's, I, I just want to make sure that it looks comparable when we're no longer on Zoom that it does in person because sometimes our in-person comments can be very enthusiastic. And I just want to make sure that it's fair for everyone. The cutoff is done to be fair. And, and I would, I would be interested in, in discussing some parameters about how to make that fair and not arbitrary. There's topics that I'm incredibly interested in and I don't want to find myself being prejudicial towards the topics that, that I leaned towards and, and not equally open to hearing about the topics that I, I have less passion for myself. And I'm just acknowledging that I'm human and not a stopwatch. And I just want to put that out there. So I'm not an objection, but I am a little cautious about that. That responsibility that, that leaves it that leaves room for folks to be frustrated when they don't get to extend their comment a long time. Judy?
I have a suggestion. I don't know that we're saying that we're going to just give open ended. I mean, I think we still have our guidelines, but we don't want to shut people down. So you could say, could you wrap up? You know, if, and I would say it would be good to still have the timer with no, I mean, just showing the time like we did as the board possibly. So people were aware. I think when you don't speak publicly, it's just important to have some awareness. And that would give you a cue to say something like, you know, where, you know, it probably would be good to wrap up in the next in your next couple of sentences or something like that.
So a grace period of sorts. Versus I can appreciate a grace period and a gentle encouragement that, that time has been reached.
And the timer either going up or down. I mean, not with a bell, but I think helps people just stay on track. That's all.
I, I can understand that. And I think it is much easier when technology is cooperative, which we can't always count on. And unfortunately, we didn't have that tonight. But maybe behind the scenes, if you all are okay, I can work through some of that with Lisa and Steve and find a system for while we're still online. And then the physical reminder when we're in person is much easier to, to recognize. So thumbs up that I have the purview to extend a gentle cutoff. If that's an okay term for everyone. Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Gordon and Laurel for bringing that up. This is as a longtime community member who made a lot of comments, that cutoff is it's brutal. So I appreciate that. On that note, we return back to the items for action at a future meeting. Up first is a board resolution on school, on a school emergency response plan. So we'll hear from Superintendent Dy about a resolution on a school emergency response plan. It's all yours.
Thank you. Yeah, this is board resolution or will be the first read for Board Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero seven School Emergency Response Plan. For some background information, the Eugene School District Four J applied for and received a school violence prevention program grant in twenty nineteen with funds awarded in twenty twenty. There were three primary areas that for support with gathering baseline data on security improvements needed. Prioritizing those needs and monitoring progress towards corrective actions or suggestions in an audit. Implementing an accessible, efficient system for managing visitor and volunteer access to schools and developing an all hazards emergency operating plan. You will receive an electronic version of a very thick document that outlines our emergency response protocols. It isn't that you necessarily need to, but you're more than welcome to adopt each individual protocol. What you're adopting here is that we will have an, an emergency operations protocol itself in place with training, adequate training and communication throughout the schools. We're in the, in the process of finalizing and getting ready to implement an all hazards emergency operation plan for all school sites and facilities. And the objectives of the plan for your benefit would be to protect the safety and welfare of students, employees and staff first. Provide a safe and coordinated response to emergencies. Protect the district's facilities and property and enable the school district to restore normal conditions with minimal confusion in the shortest time possible. Absolutely happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Sandy. Laurel?
How has these, these funds that were made available in twenty twenty been used so far?
We have conducted we've gotten audits from three different security companies around facilities and around the integration of our communications equipment as examples. We've done some work to bring in the Raptor system, for example. So go ahead, sorry.
The, is the Raptor system the system that you have to have ID for?
Or that you sign in with when you go into a building and you get, you answer the questions as to most recently our COVID protocols and you get a picture and a name tag and then you sign out when you go back in. So that keeps a tally, a record of everyone who enters the building and when they leave and where they're headed in the building.
So it doesn't, it doesn't, I, when I've heard of the Raptor program, I heard that either staff asks for ID to prove who somebody is or somebody has to produce ID, which within some communities, not everybody has identification.
No, and when you have a staff ID, you can beep into the system so that you don't have to manually enter data.
No, I mean, sorry, that, it wasn't like hyphenated stuff. It was like staff ID people, the verb to ID. Sorry. I under, how confusing that's gonna.
Yeah.
You know, and like they're asking for somebody's ID, but everybody would have to have ID for this. Is it, is it in the AR policy that we do not, people do not have to have ID?
You know, I can look into that. I don't want to say yes or no without really looking at the AR. I understand the practice is so that when someone comes in and says, for example, I'm Andy Dy. And then a staff member doesn't know that. Someone might come in knowing that there's a volunteer who's been approved with a particular name. We want to try to verify in some way that they are that actual person and not just someone coming in to pose as an approved volunteer.
So we would have to have a system in place for that.
Yeah.
Hopefully we do already.
We, we have a system for checking IDs, but in the event that someone doesn't have an ID, I'll have to come back. I think that I'll have to come back. I think that that's going to be required in order to volunteer, even if it's a, not a license. It's some other type of issued ID, a passport. Um, but I can get more information for you for students, um, or excuse me, for, for people that come in to visit or that want to volunteer when, when they. Don't readily have access to a, a state issued or federally issued or nationally issued ID.
Okay, I don't know if this is the place for this topic. But I really want to make sure we're not, the first line isn't just. Always IDs that we actually have it out in front that there's other way you can. Volunteer and enter a building if you are not documented.
I, to back up what Laurel's saying also, um, Andy, it would be great to see if that's um. A practice we can avoid. I know there's at least the catch of needing to provide your. Date of birth. When I don't have my glasses on, there's been a few times I didn't put my date of birth in correctly and it denied me. My badge so that I, I'm, I'm wondering if we can find ways where. Um, we have information that makes it feel. Like we are maintaining our level of safety and security that we'd like, but also not requiring um. Um, identification which. Um, would make this. As equitable as possible considering you can only enter the building if you've already been approved as a. Volunteer, um, for now anyway, we're not having visitors. Unless it's a special event and my understanding is special events, we don't check in the Raptor anyhow. Is that correct?
They're just checking in at the front office. Because we haven't had special events for a couple of years.
Right, but if it is a special event, are we anticipating using the Raptor system for a?
Family night, for example, or a curriculum night? No.
Or a title one event, like we're not going to be using the Raptor anyway. So visitors, it's not a question for and volunteers have already been cleared. So it feels as though there's some ways to. Um, ensure that a person is that person without demanding ID, which is very unwelcoming.
Definitely look into that and get back to you with information.
I really, I, I appreciate. Thank you and sorry to jump on there Laurel, but you spoke to something dear to me.
Uh, yeah, no, it's fine. I, I will, I have more questions. I'll go after Judy.
Judy.
Okay, I just had a general question. I was a little puzzled when I saw the resolution. Because we have not seen the plan, correct? And is the resolution approving the plan that you are now alluding to some pieces in it? Because we will be getting the plan and really what we're approving is a plan, correct?
That is correct. You're approving the resolution. That we will have an emergency operations plan, not the elements of the plan itself. But that we will have a uniform plan in the event of an all hazards emergency.
So what is our role in actually seeing the plan to the conversation we're having right now about the identi, is it just? We approve this and then just say whatever the plan is, is fine. I'm, I'm just a little confused because. I don't know why we have to do this. Get, we got a grant and have a plan.
The, the state requires that the board approve a plan.
Okay, so we will see the plan before we vote on this?
Yes, we will give you a copy. We have a few typos that we identified today. Um, and we will give the board uh, an electronic copy of it and post it in board packet. So anybody interested can take a look.
And what our resolution say, we're approving this plan and that the district should from this day forth have a safety plan. That's up to date and working in schools forever after this, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, Andy, to piggyback on Judy's question, is it possible that when we receive the. Seven thousand page document, I know it's not really seven thousand pages, but sometimes they feel like that. Could we get a um, summary of the most important components of it so that we can be made aware of the things that. Um, might be significant shifts?
Of course.
Thank you. Laurel.
Um. I, I appreciate that question Judy, um. Because when I read this, it does, I, I would love the wording to change because we don't have a plan right now. We're, we're, we, we, we're not using. Except parts of a plan right now. So I would love the worrying to change to that the board will consider real resol- resolution. Um, to implement a school emergency response plan, implement and plan for, I mean, I'll let you guys. Say what it is, but the. This says we are, we are approving a plan. And I, I, we ha, I, I know we're, you're in the midst of working on a plan and there's. A lot of people um, that are talking to you guys right now about this. And so it'd be great if we had. This was worded in such a way to say, we will be part in privy to. What this is going to be and how this will be rolled out because uh, honestly. It, it is, it seems crazy to me and I, maybe crazy is not the appropriate word. It seems. It was, well, scary to me that we are. We don't operate. During these days and times with the, exactly with like. We don't have metal detectors at all our doors. We don't, we don't have things in place. That seem, that would be normal maybe thirty years ago after, you know, the, the, the. Absolute tragedy that happened in Springfield. I feel like. I love that we're having this discussion and I love that people are, are saying, hey, here's some money. We probably need more money than whatever they offered. But I also am, a, a lot needs to happen. A lot needs to happen. We're way behind and maybe I'm more aware because of being a soldier in the past, but I think other people are also aware. Right now. That we don't have. And I'm not just talking about the board, I'm talking about the entire district. We, we are not in a place where we can. We're not proactive in our, our safety and security right now. And, and I like, they word this on purpose, I believe, was violence prevention program. Because we need to act before it could happen and it's just not there right now. So I absolutely a hundred percent support. Us having this work, but I also want it to be done. Trauma-informed. You know, with, you know, the transformational justice is part of this work to understand. I don't. Want it. To happen in a vacuum away from what, what the work and the change that we're trying to do this year, I guess. What I'm trying to say, but also I want all of it. We need it like years ago, so.
Maybe um, I will respectfully submit a, a great topic for a work session at some point prior to any final read or an adoption. Because it's a pretty beefy, uh, it, it's an extensive amount of information and a lot of work has gone into it so far. Um, but we, we'd be more than happy to talk to the board about our safety and violence prevention efforts and what we see. Both immediately and in the short term and in the long term that we need to be doing in the district.
So Andy, can we make sure that this comes back um, as an, as an item for future action? Again, and doesn't slip into item for action. It feels like we're not ready to, to take that next step.
Sure.
Thank you. I appreciate you taking note about that. Are there any other questions for now, knowing that we will be getting some more information and access to the actual proposed plan?
All right, I, I would like um. Suicide prevention to be also in here if that's possible, because I think that is definitely. Part of prevention and it, it, it does get. Self-violence is still violence. If possible.
Is there any other questions or comments? Kirsty.
Um, I was just curious as to if we're going to put a date on when we would like to see this because it seems really important to actually have this. In place um, for the majority of the school year and. In the time that can be implemented in a proper way, so um. I, I appreciate all the questions and this, the information we're like, going to get from the district, but um. I, I would kind of like to push for a date so we know that we've got something in place by. Sometime in the fall at least.
I just took note of that, Kirsty. Thank you, Andy.
I want to make sure that folks know we do have um, emergency procedure manuals in classrooms and we go through emergency drills. Um, what we're looking to do is really enhance. Our emergency preparedness and our protocols to adopt standard response protocols. And get better about, for example, planned parent reunification efforts. Um, I don't want to leave anybody with the impression that it's every school for themselves because that's not the case. We just see after having conducted audits. That there's a lot that we know now. After many events, floods, school intruders, et cetera, that we could implement. Um, I don't think that that minimizes the need, Kirsty, for um, expediency and the sooner the better. I just thought it was important to say that um, we do have things in place, uh, but we, we believe we can get mu- much, much better and more prepared.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy, and I appreciate having the chance to learn more about the plan because um. There might be some points of uh, disagreement in terms of what's presented or else. There might be spots where we notice um, holes that we would like filled in perhaps, although um. Having had the chance to have a pretty in-depth conversation surrounding. Emergency plans, um, I, I appreciate the direction that we're headed. Michelle.
Um. Like with everything, I think there is a fine balance between security, safety and equity and um. I would love to. Take a look at that plan and um, provide input with equity in mind.
Yeah, I, without going into details, for example, one of the things that I've learned and, and I'm not sure who knows this, but. When emergency response comes into our buildings, for example, their. Um, methods of communication are rendered completely effectiveless. Which means that in order to communicate with one another, they have to leave the building. And so. If a fire is happening and fire responders want to communicate with one another, they cannot do so within the confines of most of our buildings. So my understanding is that a lot of this is going to talk about those sorts of things. Am I right with that, Andy?
Yeah, and there, there are some um. Small things that we, we can put in place and then some things that are pretty significant, maybe costly in terms of repeaters and the use of common radio signals. I'm definitely happy to uh, to give you the information that you're looking for. That, that's a good thing.
Great, so let's definitely take note that we need to get a little deeper into this at our next meeting. So that like Kirsty says, we, we do this. At the earliest opportunity. Do we have any more questions or comments? Okay, so as we mentioned, this item will come back to the board for more information. Uh, first and then action at a future board meeting. Um, I would like to note that the next meeting scheduled for the board is on Wednesday, September twenty-first. And now the next component of our agenda is to um, review suggestions by the board for consideration of. Items at a future meeting. I would like to note before we start this that um, already on the list is the request made by Alicia Hayes to reintroduce the topic of our. Student safety and belonging work, which we've been referring to as all students belong. And that will definitely be coming up. It hasn't been lost, Alicia. So thank you for that. I just want to keep track of that. Are there items anyone else would like to add to a future agenda? Laura.
I have two items. Um, first is that if. If we hire. That any facilitator for our, our meetings would become, would come from outside our community. We have a really. Um, embedded community and I would ask that it'd be somebody a professional with rich. Excuse me, racial equity training background. Um. So. Excuse me, just a second. And. Do we, uh, we should vote on these one at a time, correct?
Yeah, I think they just need two hand raises to be brought up, to be considered by leadership. To discuss when and if they can be added to an agenda for sure. So I see Gordon is raising his hand. And Judy is raising her hand also, so I'm definitely noting it for the next leadership meeting conversation.
All right, great. And my second is um. I guess in, was for the OSBA is to um, that I brought up in goals. Um, I'd, I'd rather bring it up before the board so I can do a, a full presentation. I would like to. Um. I don't know how to say this. I want to divest from OSBA and I want to be able to speak to that. And I don't think it probably needs to be an entire board goal. It's basically something that I present and I and. And I give the proof and the knowledge that I have and then the board decides if that. Is something that they will do and Andy and Rob, I think your role would be to just say what, how it would affect the. Our district to do that. So I, that's, I would like to bring that up. To be in a future agenda.
I see Gordon has his hand raised. Is there someone else who wants to add that to an agenda? Okay, so I'm not seeing another hand. Laurel, can we continue that discussion in our retreat?
I guess so, but it looks like it won't be happening.
You know what? I'm going to raise my hand because I think giving Laurel a voice to that is important.
Okay, so I will add that to the list. Thank you Laurel, Alicia and Gordon. Laurel, um, do you want to bring that as an item for information first or how do you want that added?
Whatever my options.
Well, um, I think. Traditionally, the pathway has been item for information, item for future action. Item for action, however, um, I think it should be noted that I think many of us have acknowledged that. The way things have always been is not always a um. Uh, uh, a point of um. Something we're each committed to. It sounds as though you want to make a presentation though, so maybe if we do it as an item for information. That could give us time to come back as an item for action. That's just my, I'm just. I'm, I'm just.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I think it needs time. I think people need to speak to it. It's very concerning me that the board doesn't want to hear it. The people I thought who speak a lot about racial equity, but and I'm speaking to those BAs racism. Weren't interested, so it's, it's very concerning.
That's fair. I mean, an item for information and then, and then that would give us a chance to have a discussion because I. Believe there's probably a lot of people who have input that hasn't been um, there hasn't been space for that input to happen yet. I see Alicia, Gordon and Michelle all have their hands raised.
Yeah, thanks Maya. And really quickly, I was just going to say. You know, I, I, I think it goes to leadership and you guys can work with um, uh, between Gordon, you and Laurel. Uh, what's best and when to bring it forward. Um, I always think there's room for improvement on things and I'm looking forward to hearing this, looking at if. Where we can end up, how we can make this um, better. So. Uh, my two cents, just that I look to you guys and leaders. Better, so my two cents, just that I look to you guys and leadership to figure out when, when and how it.
Perfect. Thank you, Alicia. That's a great recommendation. I, I think that's exactly as. The pattern has been, right? That these come to leadership and then Gordon, myself and whoever's the next. Person will discuss this. I, I actually think, I think I see Laurel is no longer here, but I believe it is actually Laurel who is. Coming to our next leadership meeting, so that's serendipitous. Gordon, you had your hand raised. I see it lowered now. All right, Michelle? Oh, okay. Are there any other items that folks want to suggest? Being added to a future agenda? Kirsty?
And I'm open to what the future looks like for this, but I'm, I'd be curious over the course of this year to, since we had two new curriculum adoptions this past year to see. Kind of what the progress is and how reactions and things have been to that. It doesn't, like I said, it doesn't have, obviously, we just started a school year, so. That'd be an item for information, I think.
Kirsty, um, it makes sense. I mean, I personally want to give people a chance to raise their hand. I'm going to raise my hand for that. I see Judy also has her. It seems like it's pretty well supported. I'm gonna just preemptively suggest that maybe we give a little time for people to develop those reactions.
Absolutely. That's, I know, the future is open to me. I just wanted to make sure that like we were at, at some point working towards.
Hearing.
To a certain extent, ongoing information on that, yes.
Right. It's important that we track it for sure. Thank you. Is there anything else that anybody would like to bring up as an? Future agenda item? Okay, so then the last thing I'm going to say is I'd like you all to note that we will continue the practice of sharing out our leadership meeting notes. So all board members are aware, made aware of the discussion. They will be attached to the Friday memo following leadership meetings. This was not done last week due to the holiday weekend. Which I am personally very happy that our staff took the time to. Step away from some of these duties and enjoy their time with family. But they will, that, that set of notes will be attached to this Friday's. Friday memo and in the future that should be a regularly occurring practice for anybody who was wondering where they were. On that note, I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone. The meeting is adjourned at eight fifty-five PM. Thanks, everyone.